I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Okay, we'll move on to item number three, public comment. Is there any public comments? Is there any public comments? Hearing no public comment, we'll move on to item number four, approved minutes from the December 21st, 2016, regular meeting. Motion by Ann Marie, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, stained, cheerleader's eye, motion passes six to zero. Item number four, or excuse me, item number five, first selectance report, just a quick one tonight because there wasn't much business done last week. Budget process is taking shape, workshops are being set up for the month of February with the different departments. I am tentatively scheduled to present my budget to the Board of Finance on Wednesday, March 1st. So if you are around, you are certainly all welcome. We received notice from OPM that the town will have its ECS funding cut roughly $87,000 for fiscal year 2017. Every town and city in Connecticut also receives some kind of cut. I'll be working with the Board of Education, the Board of Finance to absorb this cut with no impact to the residents or services. And then finally, we received word as well from OPM that we will not receive our fiscal year 2017 low SEP payment. While this will take away some opportunity to continue to improve our infrastructure because we usually use the low SEP for roads and sidewalks, it will not have any impact on our budget as we have matching numbers on both the revenue and expense side, so it will simply be a wash. Okay. Item number six, discussion with community services director. Mary, if you want to use the mic. If you're going to walk around, it's mobile.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we put together a little package for you guys, I thought it would be easier for us to look at. I'm going to report on community services. I am going to, I'm going to separate out the library from recreation and senior. I think just for this year alone, it's easier to talk in that way, next year we may roll it in.
Just make sure you talk into the mic so that it's picked up for the people.
Okay.
So my mother doesn't yell at him.
Yeah, so my mother doesn't yell at me.
Okay, got it. Can you hear me? Okay.
She'll be in Florida anyway, so.
Okay, so we start at the first chart, I'm going to walk you through that. This is total number of registrations, and just keep in mind, as we go through this, I'm reporting from the July timeframe to December right now, so it's the first six months of this fiscal year that we're reporting on. In total, we've taken about 2,700 registrations since July. What does that really mean? 2,700 registrations, we've run 81 programs in that time period. I thought it would be interesting if we looked at who are we really serving? By looking at this chart, if you take a look, about 1,400 of the people that we've been serving are what we classify as our seniors, 55 years and older. The other 1,200 or so are from 0 to 54, or 1 to 54. They're that younger age group. This just gives us an idea of where we are right now and possibly where we need to focus. You'll see that 18 to 29-year sliver is very small. We have started to reach out to them this past six months or so. We did a dodgeball tournament, we did an under-30 basketball league, so it's picking up, it's going to take time. I never, I don't think that chunk of the pie, or that sliver of the pie, will ever be really, really big, but I think there's room for growth in that. So that kind of gives you an idea of demographics. If you turn the page to the next chart, this will probably be what you guys are a little bit more interested in. This is by programs and where we're focusing. Right now, 22% since July of our registrations are in adult sports. Adult sports includes everything from adult basketball, dodgeball, all of our exercise classes. So everything from, we are now doing five exercise classes a week in the mornings. We have an exercise class as of this week, every single morning. Everything from yoga to Chukong to Tai Chi to Zumba Gold, which is really, really great. So 22% of our registrations are sports and fitness for adults. The next big chunk is the 18%, which is our day and overnight trips. Keep in mind that this chunk of the registrations, that does include our casino trips that take place every single month, so it's a big chunk of our pie, but also it includes some of our newer things, our Radio City Music Hall, our Mets games, several different local theaters that we've gone to, including Nelson Hall, Westchester Dinner Theater, Stormville Flea Market. So there's a number of new day trips and overnight trips taking place right now that are kind of pulling in our people. The next group, I broke out youth sports in two buckets, you'll see, our summer camps, which, because it's such a big bucket, and then our sports and fitness for youth. But if you look at youth as a whole, it totals about 788 registrations. It's about, you know, over 30% of our registrations are coming from our youth. And that includes everything from, like I said, the summer camps, not just our playground program, but our technology camps we did, our vacation programs that we did. We ran, and we're running, we're going to run this month actually, a Martin Luther King Day camp where we're going to go snow tubing. We're going to run a sports, go down to Sports Center, take the kids for a day.
Can we come?
Sure. I could use a couple chaperones, actually. So things like that. So that's all bunched into that playground kind of camp bucket. And then the sports and fitness includes, once again, our basketball program, which is huge. We tried a Zumba Kid program, which we had a number of registrants for. It includes our tennis, it includes a summer football camp that we did, and a number of different basketball camps throughout the summer. Senior luncheons is the next group, which was about 13% of our registrations. I'm really excited about this one because I think we've grown it. We received a grant from the Matthews Foundation, which allowed us to supplement. We do a monthly luncheon, in-house luncheon for our residents. It includes a catered meal from Matty's Deli, and it includes entertainment at every luncheon. We're averaging about 55 people, 55, 60 people every single month at those. Part of the reason is because we're bringing in some great entertainment, as well as the food's great, and it's very, very reasonably priced. I mean, we're charging $8 per person, and we're drawing people. So it's a great way for our seniors to come together and participate. That number also includes our monthly lunch bunch where we go out and we take a group of residents to a restaurant, a local restaurant, is included in that as well. Our aquatics program is the next bucket, about 11% of our registrations are now coming from our aquatics program. Something else I'm really excited about, I think a lot of people are excited about, we're using the pool more, which is really important. We now have the pool on Monday, Wednesday, Friday evenings, and Saturday afternoons. We used to have it one night a week, you know, now we're up to three, and a fourth, which is a Saturday. Out of that 11%, just this fall alone, we had 129 lessons that took place. Children were registered for lessons. And fall is very, very small time for us. The spring and the summer, it goes way up. So that was something new that we did. We also have over 230, I believe that's the number, of pool memberships, so registered residents for our pool membership that are using the pool. So that, I think that's, it's awesome. We're introducing a master swim club, which is going to take place from 6 o'clock to 6:45 in the mornings on Mondays and Wednesday mornings, which I think residents, I'm looking forward to. I think residents have asked us for it, we're going to give it a go and see what happens. So that's the other new thing that's taking place. The last bucket is about 4%, that's a small group. It's health, wellness, and education. That's a bucket that we're looking to grow a little bit. That includes things like, we just did this past fall, a diabetes workshop. This we found, it was through Griffin Hospital, it was a grant that they had received, it was free to our residents, it was an eight-week program for our residents, you signed up for it, there was a nurse practitioner that ran it, gave them tools of managing their diabetes, what you need to know, what you don't need to know. Eight weeks, these people came for an hour and a half every night, or one night a week. It was awesome. We maxed out at 22, we filled it, that was the max, and it was free to our residents. So anything, we're looking for more programs like that to educate our residents, keep them healthy. We just found another one, which is called A Matter of Balance, which is going to be done, it's also going to be free to our residents, they'll take a total of 16 people in it. It's through Valley Community Health. And they're going to run that program with us, for us as well, which is six weeks, that'll be free to our residents as well. So we are looking to grow that group over the next, you know, over the next year or so. Okay, if you guys skip to the next chart. The next chart just gives you an idea, I'm not going to kind of bore you, I think you guys know most of the programs, or hopefully know a lot of our programs that we're running, our typical programs like our basketball, our playground, so forth. These are new programs. New programs, just the new programs that we have introduced from July to December. So everything on this list, now, the reason I've seen your monthly luncheons is yes, we did them, but we weren't doing them on a regular basis. These are now every single month. The pool membership, which is new. The men's under-40 basketball, we used to have an over-40, we introduced an under-40. Church transportation, we started. Dodgeball tournament, Zumba adult, now, we always did a Zumba Gold, but we didn't do a Zumba adult at nighttime for our residents. Tai Chi is new, the fall swim lessons, summer football, I can go on and on. The Essex steam train trip, the 9/11 trip, these are all new programs since July. Gives you an idea of what we're kind of moving towards. We're trying a lot of different things to see kind of what sticks, and we're learning a lot. The next chart shows winter and spring, these are also just new programs, this isn't everything we're doing, just the new programs that we're going to be introducing. We have a fitness center that's opening, hopefully you guys have heard about it. Once again, that's made possible through a grant through the Matthews Foundation that we're able to do that. That'll be opening in the next couple of weeks or so. That's taking place, it'll have a, we have a room wall set up, it's been painted, we're ready to go. It'll have a treadmill, a bike, a all-in-one unit, weight unit, dumbbells, benches, mats. So it's small, but it will be available to our residents, which we're really excited about. We've had some interest in that as well. The master swim club I already spoke about, we're introducing as of tomorrow night, we already have registrants, a water exercise class, which is new. Have a teacher up and ready to go. A new zumba toning class, we're going to try an adult karate class, we've had some requests for adult karate, so we're giving that a shot as well. Spoke about A Matter of Balance, a number of different theater programs, a chess club. This is going to be held at Chatfield School. We're waiting for approval on that one, we've had requests for it, we're going to give it a go and see if we can get enough people to participate in that. We're going to try Yankees game this year, we're working on Abachi Court, and then we have a Pacific Coastal cruise that's going to take place in September. You fly out to the west and you go on this beautiful cruise all over. We already have 28 people registered for this cruise, so we're really excited about that one as well. That gives you an idea of the new programs. I'm going to jump a little bit and go to library programs. The library programs, I think I skipped a page, hold on. Nope, let's go back. Library use. Did I skip a page?
Yep.
Yes, I did. Library, okay, public library use. Two numbers I have for you, total patrons, 24,000 people have walked through our doors since July. We have a people counter, that's how we know that, okay? So there can be duplicates in there, obviously, yes, there's duplicates. Because people do, people do go to the library more than once, and people that typically go to the library, go to libraries several times. We don't have a way to sort out the unique users for that, it's 24,000 is what we have going through our doors since July. Circulation is at about 32,000. What does that number mean? We're trying to drill down to it, what we feel right now is that's right on par with a number of other towns who have the same population as us. Woolcott is a good example, there's about 16,000 people in Woolcott, they're a little under us as far as circulation goes. New Canaan is a little bit above us, but we're doing pretty well, although there's obviously more room for improvement on circulation. Keep in mind, eBooks is included in that, and we only see that growing more and more versus people coming in and checking out books.
eBooks is or is not?
It is growing, it is.
It's in the?
It's in there, yeah, it is in there, but we see it even growing more and more in the coming, you know, in the coming years. Programs for the library. Library programs are doing great. I think they always have been, have done really well. I think what's new is the adult programs, which Suzanne Garvey's done an incredible job with this. They offered for adults over 23 different adult programs in the past six months. Some of the really big programs that they offered were like ghost hunting, believe it or not, that brought in over 70 people to our library. Birds of, yes, Birds of Prey is another one, brought in 60 people. I mean, people are drawn to some of the adult programs, not only the children programs, which is really good. They also, one of the big ones was, believe it or not, Pets First Aid. Everybody loves pets, it was a great one that they did, and it brought in, I don't know, I think 30, 35 people. So the adult programs are doing well, the children's programs always do well. I mean, they've always done well, and they continue to do well. There was 952 attendees just in our little kids' programs. So in total, we ran 78 programs at the library. Keep in mind, these are all free programs to our residents, and 1,700 attendees. Once again, that 1,700 attendees could be duplicate people that are coming, but it's like anything else, they're using our programs, they're coming to our programs. Okay, so that's library. And then lastly, I'll talk, and I can take questions too, guys, I'll just go through the last slide really quick. Just want to talk a little bit about what I see as the challenges for 2017. Number one is definitely staffing. We've got a really good momentum going right now, the staff is dedicated, they go above and beyond, they're doing a great job. But as we grow our programs and as we try to keep and increase this momentum, just staffing is going to continually be a concern, we're going to need more staffing. The next thing is facility usage. As our programs grow, the need for additional custodial staff, the need for upkeep and maintenance rises. The building right now is being used five days a week, at night, not just during the day. We have something there every night, whether it be basketball, an exercise program, Girl Scouts are there tonight, I mean, there's always someone in that building. So it's just the upkeep and the maintenance of the building will continue to be, you know, a need, a need, something that we'll have to focus on. And then lastly is communication. Communication is always an issue, I think, for our residents, we're doing a good job, there's always room for improvement, we're using Facebook, we're using email blasts, we're using Twitter, we're using Voices. Hopefully you guys have seen the big inserts we've done in Voices, so we're using Voices. But with increased communication, you need manpower, and we just have to keep the momentum going, and we got to find new creative ways to communicate all of our programs to residents. I think that will continue to happen as people hear more and more about us and sign up for our programs. So that's what I have for you. Questions?
Open up the floor.
I don't have any questions, I just have a comment, I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Growing the community center, and it's nice to see that there's more and more activities happening at the library, and more and more residents are getting involved.
Thank you.
Both the community center and public, the library, just keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I have a couple questions.
Sure.
I think it's great that you have these numbers here, I do definitely appreciate that. Do you have any comparative data to see how we're doing, if we're growing, half year over half year?
I don't have the stats, because we started our registration system when I first got here, and it's taken us about a year to get it up and running. Next year, I'll be able to show you these side by side.
All right, great.
I mean, I could tell you it's grown, and I think you know it, but I don't have the data right now to support it, unfortunately.
Understood. So I think it's great that you are, just from a personal perspective, emphasizing the 18 to 29-year-old range. So I'm on the Livable Communities Committee, which I'm sure you know, we've talked, and we did, you know, like a survey of residents, and we found that that's about community services, and that's something that we definitely found, that there's a desire for amongst people that age, but then I think that comes back to the communication aspect, getting in touch with them.
That's why we did actually, Zach Filippas is who is our rec manager, he's doing an incredible job. He just, well, I'll say two months ago, opened up a Twitter account, because we really felt that's how we're going to reach that age group. So we've started to use that, you know, it's about building that as well, but hopefully that will help us reach out to that group.
And I was going to segue into my next question, which is, amongst all the ways that you do communicate, have you had any studies or any kind of feeling on which has been the most effective, which you've seen the most people coming in from?
Email blasts.
Email blasts.
And email blasts, and our Voices insertion.
Okay.
Hope you guys have seen it, I meant to bring it, I did not. It was our four-page spread. By far, the Voices brought us in. Now, I don't believe it hit our parents, it hit our older people.
Right, I was, yeah.
You know, it did not hit your group, which is, you know, that Twitter group and the email, but email blasts seemed to be the best thing for us, as we build the number of users on our system, as well as the Voices insert did a phenomenal job for us.
What group is he? So care, I'll say.
I'm going to just say, he's speaking for that younger group.
Oh, wow. Very much amongst that younger group as well.
Yeah, yes.
So one more, I guess, more specific, personal type of question.
Yep.
What, can you elaborate at all on the flag football program?
I'd like to leave that to Zach Filippas to do.
Okay.
Actually, but no, what I will tell you is, we're waiting on approval, it's going to take place up at the senior Seymour High School.
Okay.
We're doing an adult and a high school league, is what I can tell you. It'll take place once a week, so I do know a little bit, it'll take place once a week. We haven't priced it out or anything yet, because we're waiting on approval of getting the, getting the field.
Do you think, I'm sorry if I veer off a little bit into things most people here don't care about, because I have, because when I got the email that that was going to be included, I told a bunch of my buddies, and, you know, a lot of interest amongst people I know.
Yep.
Do you think that we'll be able to get enough people if we separate the leagues between high school and?
That's a great question, great question.
Yeah.
We went back and forth on whether or not we should do that or not, we decided to separate it.
Okay.
With the understanding that if we have to, we may have to merge them.
Okay, because if it's, I'm assuming it's going to be a non-contact.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
I would argue that.
It's never non-contact.
Yeah. Well, there's, no, there are two different, two different ways, I've played in both, I've played in full-contact ones, which are insane, and I've played in, you know, in college, the intramural ones are non-contact, and the refs usually are pretty good about enforcing it. They do become a little more contact, but, you know, they have good ways of, you know, getting penalizing when there is contact. So I think maybe, you know, maybe the high school kids and adults will be able to.
Can do it, and that's.
I was just concerned that it was going to be another, like, under, over 30 or 40 type thing.
No, no.
Some people would be.
No, and we did go into it thinking, should we do that or not, and we decided, well, let's give it a go. It's the same thing happened with our dodgeball tournament. We did really well with our dodgeball tournament, I anticipate next year it's going to be even better. We had seven teams register. It was a mixture of high school kids up to about 35. I mean, that's what it was.
Everybody should watch the video as well.
Yeah, watch the, there is an awesome video, if I do say so.
On YouTube, yeah, it's about a two-minute video.
It's on YouTube, it's also on our, yeah, it's on our Facebook page. It's a great video, it took place the Friday before Thanksgiving. We had seven teams. We opened it up to Valley residents to draw some more people in, and it did really well. I think next year, we'll have a number of teams from Seymour. I think, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if we doubled it. The word's now out there, so.
All right.
I will keep in mind, I agree with you on the adult, you know, we're going to weigh it.
Great, I appreciate that. So to touch on some other things that aren't necessarily just about me, like the senior lunches, have you seen this steadily growing? Because that's something our Livable Communities talked about, and we said that that was something that a lot of surrounding communities did really well.
Mm-hmm.
And they had seen a lot of participation, and we thought that that was something that maybe in the past we hadn't been doing correctly, but now it seems that, since it is picking up, that's good to hear, and I'm glad that it's very reasonably priced.
Yeah, it's definitely growing, and I think it's growing for a number of different reasons. The price, I think word's getting out there that we're doing a lot more, they want to come out, it's a great environment, and there's entertainment. I mean, so, and words being passed, people are telling their friends, so yes.
And you think that will perhaps help keep more Seymour people in Seymour?
I hope so, yeah.
That's something that we.
I do, I do, because I think as we do the luncheons, we tell them about everything else going on too.
Okay, great.
You know, so it's a matter.
Maybe some of those people don't get it any other way, that maybe they're not on Facebook or.
Yeah, yeah, and that, we do do a newsletter for the seniors, but that doesn't mean that all of them are registered for our newsletter.
And also, if you don't go to the community center regularly, you can still go to the one of these lunches.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes, yes.
Great, thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Any, if you have anything else?
Oh, that's it.
So I'm sure the flag will be co-ed, because some of us do like to enjoy.
Absolutely.
Non-contact sport, even though we may be older, Stefan.
Okay, come on in. That's why I was hoping it wasn't under 40, so we can get you in there.
Wow. That was well played.
That's why I love Stefan.
I can start taking names and checks now, if you guys want. We'll get this going.
Make sure Seymour Ambrose is there.
Make sure I have my personal trainer.
No, but as a side note, the Board of Education, particularly the superintendent, has been extremely cooperative.
Absolutely.
In the use of facilities and getting a lot of the stuff done. The adult swim, or the master swim in the morning was a little bit challenging, but the superintendent was very open and receptive and worked.
In terms of security and getting people in.
And getting things in, and working around us, and providing times and things, so.
And that's why it has to be that time?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
We also wanted to cater towards those people who want to go to the pool before work. That was the other logic, and picking the early morning time, you know, so that they can go swim and then go right to work.
Because I think they let the kids in as early as seven.
They do.
Yeah.
So we have to be out, yes, yeah.
But to some, Stefan's point, so the one thing that's going to help us, Zach Filippas is 20-something, so he's right in that age group that we're trying to get more activity for, so he's kind of got his, kind of fingers on the pulse of that, so that's a good thing. We certainly expanded for the senior center, which is good, I know that's always been an issue, contention in this town. And, you know, if you have a chance, if you get on with the community center, what was once a building that everybody said was constantly empty, is constantly going, between what we have going with community services, the Boys and Girls Club, the food bank, so it's a very highly-used building now, which, to Mary's point, is going to require some investment from the community in the next year or two to continue to upgrade that facility. So, any other questions, comments?
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
It's wonderful to see all these programs that you've introduced, and just the movement in and out of that community center now. I was floored with the amount of people that you said have been there from July through December.
Yeah.
And it's nice to see.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for your support, everybody.
Excellent. Thanks, Mary. Okay. So we'll move on to item number seven, discussion, take possible action regarding Siemens building monitoring contract. In your packets, you should have a little packet, one is some information from Siemens, excuse me, on their advantage services, and then is a letter to the board from Tony Caserta, our Director of Operations. Says, "We currently use Siemens to monitor three of our town buildings. By adding the two firehouses and entering into a town-wide contract, we will save approximately $1,000 per year. The five-year term gives us price certainty and creates budgetary consistency. The cost for the full term of the contract for firearm testing inspection is $5,588, with a 3% increase in year three. Please let me know if you have any questions or concerns. Thank you, Anthony Caserta." So we've been looking for ways, as contracts have been coming open, to try to bring things together to save money, this is another one of those things. This process was kind of spearheaded by Tony and Rory to get this taken care of.